If ever there was a need for a stamp.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
What's that?
Stan.
Oh. I think we're good, all right. Well, I'd like to call our Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024 meeting in order. If you guys will rise and join us for a prayer and the pledge, please.
Please bow your heads with me. Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the many blessings you've given us. Lord, we thank you so much for this beautiful community that we're all so blessed to serve. And, Lord, we just ask that you be present in this meeting tonight, that you be with the council members and give them the wisdom and the discernment to make the choices as you would have them lead this community. Lord, we ask that you be with all those present tonight. Just be with them in any presentations and consideration that they have for the community this evening and just give them a special blessing for the events and the activities that they take place in and for stepping up to be willing participants within our community. Lord, we just ask that you be with each of us as we leave here tonight and just help us to go home safely. Lead us and guide us and forgive us where we fail you. We say all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Chairman Kurt Timpkins.
Here.
Councilwoman Oflinger.
Here.
Councilwoman Hedin.
Here.
Councilwoman Blaze.
Here.
You have the form.
Thank you very much. First up, we have public comment. We'll forego the warning as you know it as well as all of us, so I will give you your three minutes. Ms. Shannon Walker.
Good evening, Council. For the record, my name is Shannon Walker and I'm the Executive Director of the Aurora Chamber of Commerce. And I am here in, to kind of address an issue that was brought up at the last council meeting. It was stated by our city manager that at one point in time, the car show was held in our downtown area. While this is true, it's far from the entire story. Although, the car show did indeed begin downtown 40 years ago, the committee at the time was asked to move it for various reasons. For a time, it was held on a school campus. When it outgrew that space, a group of community leaders and business folks brainstormed and proposed Oak Park as its new location, where it's been successfully held for over 30 years. Events like the car show and others, whether it's a chamber event or events run by other groups in our community, provide much-needed tax dollars to our community, from both local residents and out-of-town visitors who travel here to enjoy the festivities. Ultimately, the city does gain from all events that are held in Aurora. For any event to succeed, the lines of communication and cooperation between all parties involved must be clear and open. Productive conversation needs to be about the facts. Times things can be said that leads to misunderstandings, which only hurt the events and the people who are involved. In the interest of establishing those open and honest lines of communication, I am sure that the chamber board, our committee members, would be very open to having a session, a work session, a meeting, however it feels, it fits within the council guidelines, so that we can have these conversations and bring up concerns or new ideas. As part of the communication process, I have posted a survey online regarding the car show, and I am providing each of you with a copy of the survey and the responses that I received. I hope that you find it informative. In conclusion, I am forever grateful for the partnerships of not only the city council, but especially our departments and the individuals who work for the city that helped make every event that not only the chamber does, but other groups do also. I look forward to discussing compromises and finding solutions in the future. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions or anything?
I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to council forum. Mr. Proten.
We did not have a park board meeting this week due to forum issues, so I have no meetings or no information.
Mr. Blaze.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you.
I went to the hospital board meeting, which is always in the lightning. I'm trying to stall for Teresa.
Well, that's all right. I missed last meeting. I was out. But I know at some point between the last meeting and now, I attended a meeting with the school board and staff to talk about the trail. It went very well, made lots of progress.
Great.
Attended a couple demos for software, at least one, I think, since the last time. So, pretty interesting stuff. Can't wait to hear more about it, so.
Okay. Excuse me. I went to the MML, the regional meeting that was at the Monet Casino last Tuesday. Boy, the days run together. I kind of remember, have a hard time remembering what day it is. But, but anyway, and then also too, I think it was last week as well, I was with the solid surface, solid surface, excuse me, solid waste board, and we determined, gave away some grant money. And it's the first time that I can recall that the request for grants was less than what we had to offer. So, might think about that for next year. So, and the one I'm most impressive with, pressed with, was the Hanson Tree Service. I don't remember how much they got again, but just so, you know, they're a tree service. They cut trees down, they do mulch and, you know, other product and such. But they're also going, I can report, like to Branson, Silver Dollar City, and some big food buffets and get their food waste. And the last grant cycle, they eliminated 992 tons of food waste that would have gone into the landfill, and they mix that in with their mulch and then for it to degrade, and then they're able to sell, package and sell the mulch. What a brilliant idea. So, anyway, let's see. I guess that's all that I probably should report. Thank you.
I also tended, I forgot, Grow meeting last Friday. It was really, really informative. Hadn't been in a while. Some interesting stuff going on that mentioned worked with Kerry quite a bit. So, appreciate your, your help with those groups and some interesting things maybe in fruition. So, moving on to the consent agenda, this will be 6 dot 1, 6 dot 2, the regular session minutes from October 8th, along with the October appropriations.
Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda containing the regular session minutes, October 8, 2024, and October 2024 appropriations.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Please vote. Thank you. Having no old business, we'll move on to new business. Counsel, I would like to make a motion that we table 8 dot 1 until further notice. This person was not ready to present to us.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Thank you. Moving on to 8 dot 2, Resolution Number 2024-1998, Data Design Services and Installation for Recreation Center.
Good evening, Council.
Hello.
First of all, I want to start with just bringing your attention to the ACIS estimate documentation that is on the dais before you this evening. That's based on an error, which was my error in the agenda. So, page two of these estimates, which is actually just page two of that first section, was missing for some reason in my scan, and I did not notice that until I saw that this afternoon. So, the documentation that's in front of you on the dais is actually the complete. You'll see that the only difference, if you add those two numbers together on page one, the only difference is the tax amount on page two, which will be removed in the end anyway, since we're tax exempt. So, you really got to see the numbers, but I just wanted to make sure that you're clear, there was a page two that was not included in your agenda. So, that's before you now. In addition to that, I've also laid in front of you just a multi-page document that is the actual design of where they'll be placing speakers and where their runs and drops and that kind of thing would be throughout the facility. I thought that some of you might like to see that as well. And that I didn't have at the time for the agenda, so wanted you to see it this evening. If you have any questions, so basically, everything is in that estimate as presented by Travis with ACIS. If you'll recall, recall back in January, we had a resolution that approved us moving forward with ACIS for the design of this IT. This just cleans that up. The $6,800 that was approved in January has not yet been expended, so that's within this estimate that you would be considering this evening. And this includes both their design and their installation services. The only thing that would be secondary that I'd want to make sure you're aware of is the audio system. So, we are working with ACIS for both the IT, so the fiber installation, as well as the speakers and audio system on the recreation side of the facility. They are unable to complete all of the aspects of the AV situation on the community side, so we're treating those as two separate. So, this audio that you see on the ACIS estimate would be for the recreation side in totality. The community side will come before you separately.
Did you say they're unable to do that?
Yeah, so basically, so some of the visual stuff, like when we get into the audiovisual, the projector screen, some of those kind of things, they just kind of stop, and they really do more, just like the IT fiber, audio-type things, they don't really do the visuals. So, they were a little bit hesitant on that. So, we've worked with Southwest Audiovisual since they've done our work here, and we received that quote back today. ACIS just felt like that was getting into a little more of a visual aid type thing than they're prepared to do.
Gotcha.
So, that's why we're treating it separately.
Okay. Questions?
Probably had a couple, and I don't think, do they have a representative here?
They don't. And that, I told him I didn't think it would be necessary, but I'm happy to try to answer.
I trust you to bring it to them. They don't have any lifts in their quote. I just want to make sure they worked that out with the GC, because some GC's insurance policies don't allow them to share lifts.
Okay.
So, I want to make sure they have worked that out beforehand. And then two, the only question I have, they have 84 total runs, but they only have 48 ports of service on their switch quote. So, I don't know if that's a data error, and they meant to say 48 port switches for a total of 96, or a quantity issue, or what. But yeah, they've got more runs than they have switch capability on their quote.
Okay. I'll address that with them. I can't speak to that. I believe I can speak to the lift issue. And so, what we did, we had a little bit of a concern of some things meshing in terms of, when we look at this furniture and fixtures budget, Anthony and Jeremy and I have been digging into that really deep, and John as well. And we're looking at lots of different aspects that were starting to collide, and we didn't have those people together in a way that really suited me. So, two weeks ago on Friday, I had all parties meet. So, we brought in ACIS, Southwest Audio, the general contractor, the engineer, the architect. We had everybody on site, and I said, what does everybody need for this all to compile together? So, they had some of those conversations, and I don't believe there's any concern there in terms of the physicality on site.
Did they, do we know, I mean, I know the, the construction part of it, they added the rough end for the conduit. Did they do any rough end of data cabling, or is this, are they going to be doing every bit of it in this quote?
No, that will, so all of the conduit and all that is run previously by the prior design. And then, what's coming in that would be anything conduit that's in this would be additional, because there wasn't enough space from that, for them in the original design.
Okay, good.
So, we did have to add some capability, because they had more cables than they felt like would fit.
Okay.
We almost had to redesign a ceiling, but we've gotten around that, if this suffices.
And we think, looking at the drops, I mean, I, I remember the layout from going through the KDG, but we think from a, from a density perspective in the office areas, everything, we think that's good coverage?
We do, yep.
Okay.
We did have some in-depth conversations about some of that, because we had some issues where we didn't feel like we had a data port where we needed it for a TV, for a display, some things like that. And we have had some, some changes on some of that stuff, and we've accommodated for those.
And there's got to be more, but as long as we made at least one pass to.
Yeah. And that's why we brought every, you know, and that's really been, some of those changes honestly have taken place since Anthony came on, because we had a lot of this designed prior to him. And then he said, hold up, guys, I need to do this. And he's been fantastic about knowing what he needs where. So, I want to give Anthony some props for that, and Jeremy as well. But we did have to make some adjustments based on him saying, that's really not going to work. So, I think we've covered a lot of that, but like you said, there may be more.
Yeah, excellent.
We're almost there.
Thank you.
Sure.
With that, I will make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2024-1998, Data Design Services and Installation for Rec Center.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Thank you, Council.
Moving on to 8 dot 3, Resolution Number 2024-1999, SCBA compressor purchase for fire departments.
Counsel, I'm covering this for Chief Hurd, that he is out on, at a training. When a few months back, a month or so back, that he was having them come in and, because he was having some problems with the air compressor for the SCBA, which is self-contained breathing apparatus. So, they fill all the air tanks and stuff for the staff, for the staff and the equipment for fire department. He was having some problems, and they looked at it, and it was beyond repair in the estimation of Sentinel Solutions, emergency solutions. And so, he went out and talked to me about it, and that is, of course, something that they absolutely have to have. So, we went out and he contacted different, the different groups, the different vendors directly to see about getting pricing for that. One of the things that he looked at is he was like the Cascade System and the fill station. That was not needed to be able to, to, to replace that. That is just simple equipment. It was only the air compressor. So, he talked to the different vendors to see if they would split that up so that he could just get the air compressor and then get it installed. So, when he did that, only one of those vendors came back and said that they would do that. So, his recommendation is, is that we move forward with that instead of spending the approximately $28,000 to $35,000, is that effectively, we're cutting that just about in half at $17,000, just to have the fill station, or excuse me, just the compressor. And that is his recommendation.
Questions? I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2024-1999, SCBA compressor purchase for fire department.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote. Thank you. 8 dot 4, Resolution Number 2024-2000, Purchase of Fitness Equipment for the Aurora Recreation Center.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, sir.
I'm pumped, so apologies if, if I come across super energetic, because I'm excited about this topic. Fitness equipment is one of those purchases that seems big on a budget, budget list, but that's because this is a major draw, not just a selling point, but marketing for this facility that we'll have inside of it. So, I'm excited to present this to you. I'd like to take a quick minute to discuss our recommendation. So, what is before you is the bids. We're going to recommend that we go with Advanced Exercise. Advanced Exercise has an exclusive partnership, and they are the only authorized commercial dealer with a life fitness family of brands. It includes Hammer Strength, for example. Life Fitness is the leading commercial fitness equipment company in the world, and they're made in the USA. They have, and they have brands, other partnerships that Advanced Exercise has partnerships with, but they're exclusively with Life Fitness. So, what he is offering us, as you can see in the bids before you, if you had, if you had time to read almost 300 pages of, of bids, he's offering us no-cost freight, delivery and installation, a multi-phase lease option. So, we're a three, four, and five-year leases for those cardio, those large implement costly items. So, we're not getting hit with a lump sum all at once. So, like, for example, if we go with a four-year lease for all of the equipment at four years, we're know that we're coming up due with a large, another large purchase we have to plan for. He's extending the parts and labor warranties for the items of the four- and five-year lease programs. If you had a chance to look at the bid, most of those items are between one and three-year warranties for the parts and labor. He is extending that through his company, so you're covered, we're covered for five years on all of our cardio equipment, which is pretty impressive. And then, he's giving us a year of quarterly preventative maintenance at no cost to the city, as well as some cleaning supplies up front. So, this is an opportunity for us to, when we market this facility, whether it's through mailings or however we decide to market it, we can put literally state-of-the-art, industry-leading equipment on the, on the marketing and on the flyers and how we can talk about it. So, our recommendation after our review of the bids and scoring and talking discussions that we had, we recommend going with Advanced Exercise.
I appreciate the thorough questionnaire and scoring, and yeah, it's great, put together really well.
It's good.
Questions?
No, I think that was one thing that stuck out to me, was the year four and five, because the others would have been a pretty significant bill, so that was, was good.
Plus, from a marketing standpoint, we can tell people, we're getting new equipment at three-year mark, four-year mark, five-year mark. That just helps people know that we're paying attention and bringing in equipment, so.
Yeah, that stuff goes pretty quick, too.
Yeah.
Entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept Resolution 2024-2000, Purchase of Fitness Equipment for the Aurora Recreation Center.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
8 dot 5, Special Event Application Side-by-Side Christmas Parade.
Counsel, this request comes by formal application from Laura Lee Vought. She's present tonight, so I'm going to yield to her to give her presentation. This was discussed at your management meeting this morning. No concerns from staff. This will be basically a repeat from previous years, so I'll let her visit with you about the details of her event.
Good evening.
Evening.
Pretty much the exact same thing as last year, same route, same stops, with a couple exceptions. One is, instead of a $10 entry fee this year, we've decided to ask for a bag of dog or cat food that's going, I spoke with Annie, and she is willing to be there to accept all the donations, so we don't have to cart them around back and forth all over the place, which I appreciate very much. The other thing is, Said Vought from Crane, she is a senior at Crane High School. She's been operating her own food truck, coffee, hot chocolate, and sandwiches for about two years now. And she is going to come and set up on Jimmy Mitchell's parking lot. She is fully aware of all of the permits and licenses and food situations that she needs to take care of beforehand, and she is willing to do so. We did have, we did decide as a committee too this time that we are not going to allow any throwing of candy. We did have one person do that last year. They did ask permission. We said yes, but we decided that we don't, we think it's a safety issue with all the vehicles, and it's dark. So, we are going to request that that does not happen. We are having on the same day as the Aurora Christmas Parade, so I really feel like all the kids in town are going to be full to the gills on candy, so I don't feel so bad about that. And I think that's all. There's really nothing else new. The same, we're going to the same places, same stops, same route. Police and fires fully aware of what's happening, and they're on board as well. Any questions for me?
No questions. I think it's awesome event.
Super great event.
Also, last year, we did have 92 rigs show up to participate. We had people from Lebanon. We had people from other side of Joplin, like on the Kansas border show up. Nevada, I believe, we had as well. So, yeah, it was, I hope we'd over 100 this year, so we'll see what happens.
That's awesome.
We do, too.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I'll make a motion. We approve Special Event Application Side-by-Side Christmas Parade.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Next up, staff reports. John?
Counsel, first things, I wanted to say thank you to Shannon for getting out ahead and getting some of those, getting surveys done and things like that. I appreciate that, because that was one thing afterwards I kind of thought about, is that that may be something that I was going to have, actually talk to you about, is the possibility of getting some surveys done. Looks like she surveyed the participants, and it's my understanding that Kelly Johnson is also working on, there's a neighborhood Facebook group over there that he's put a survey out for, and stuff like that. So, that would be good information to, to have and to get direct feedback from the, from the actual residents and stuff would be great. So, just as I said, I wanted to thank Shannon for getting out ahead of me on that. Police gearing up for Halloween. They're scheduling extra staff. Several PD staff are out this week, and they're attending crisis intervention training this week. There's several, that's only offered by the state a couple times a year, so Wes took, took the steps to try to get as many of his staff to that as possible this week. Fire, as I said, Greg is out, so nothing to report on that. Brush pickup is this week. Cleanup and clearing of the rec center, corner park area, and areas along Adams Street and Adam Anderson Street will be next. I don't know if you have seen that, but the, where we demolished the house, where the house was sitting, a lot of those trees that kind of blocked the view to go back to where you could see the recreation center. We took a lot of that, just the scrub trees, anything that was this big or bigger as far as established trees left there to make it more of a park setting. So, there's also one building there that is a broken roof and it's kind of caving in. It's a short little building. Michael Singer has actually offered to raise that for us and bury the debris, so we're working conversations with him on that. Carrie, do you have anything to add on that?
No, he's, the demolition at no cost. Since they're, they're taking care of a walking trail, he's willing to take care of that while he's on site, so.
He was also very happy that we were getting a lot of that junk out of the way and stuff. So, it'll be more of an open area. So, leaf pickup dates at this time, we are holding, in a holding pattern, since most of the leaves haven't fell yet. So, we're kind of waiting on that, but we'll work on making timely announcements as soon as that moves forward. The park, Travis and his staff have repaired the damage to the skate park bathroom from the fallen limb and the tree that was taken out there. Also, staff, Trav and his staff are struggling with vandals at all the park bathrooms, flushing the toilets, breaking things, breaking sinks, and just all sorts of stuff. So, a lot of those, they try to get around and lock up when things are going on and so on and so forth. So, just letting you guys know that that's going on, and they're fighting that. Construction updates, they're busy and on schedule. The furniture proposal, we're working out the details with furniture dealers at this time to finalize the final costs. And then, the recreation center property corner park area that I just talked about. The discussion is, is that there is no name for that park that we're planning on. That has been, you know, kind of a plan all along to make that a pocket park at some point. So, we were discussing the possibility of a name discussion with the park board, but also with the council, to bring that to the council and that kind of thing. And again, cleaning up the overgrown areas along the fence, along Adams and Washington Streets. So, I'm going to pause here. Is there any concerns about that at this time?
None for me.
Okay. So, I would, Carrie and I went out there after last Thursday, when they were, after they were done. They're not done yet, but done for the day. And they're still, it really looks great, you know, looks great having all of that scrub and underbrush out of there. So, recreation center budget, you guys, those, we've placed that there. And the site development discussion, that is set for October 28th, and so you have the proposed budget that has been provided to you for your review between now and next week. I know that Anthony is probably going to bring some more information on that. He may have that earlier than that, some breakdowns of a few different things. If he does and gets that to me, I'll get it sent on to you guys.
Thank you.
Stormwater pipe on Elliott Street by the fire station, just on the, on the north side of the fire station drive. That actually collapsed there. And anything that happens in the MoDOT right-of-way, that's the thing about, say, all the sidewalks are getting put in right now, is that they're putting them there. By the agreement, there is an agreement that was signed in back in 1957, that if it's, that any infrastructure that is, would be not the property of, say, Spire or the Liberty or something like that, if there's any infrastructure there, then that belongs to us and we have to maintain it. And that goes back to, again, a long-term contract agreement that was signed back in 1957. Carrie, would you have anything to add on that?
No, we've been working with the most recently appointed traffic engineer that takes care of permitting, and that's how we've learned some of the in-depth details of that agreement. I didn't ever know there was an agreement. We now have a copy, and we're working through that appropriately with MoDOT, so.
We just got notified of that about this time last year, I think, in the, in the winter of last year.
We now have to permit all of our right-of-way work with MoDOT, and we're doing that through Jason's department and mine are partnering. We now have to permit all of our right-of-way work with MoDOT and we're doing that through Jason's department and mine are partnering to make sure that we do that each time they do work in those right-of-ways, so.
Wastewater, all staff have, have passed their CDL certification. New staff are working on obtaining their Class D wastewater operator license. And the tenured staff member that we have out there is working towards getting the next level of wastewater operator's license, which is a C. Carrie and I met with the consulting engineer regarding the next set of projects and when we need to have the capital improvement project list into MoDOT. That is due in mid-December, so we have already started to schedule the meeting with the airport board for just that issue, and that will be scheduled for December third. There is some discussion a little bit that we had with the consultant about the possibility of that, for the next two years, for twenty-five and twenty-six, that the normal ninety-ten cost sharing that has been in place for years, that's going to move to ninety-five-five percent. And so I know that, Teresa, it's my understanding that there was some pushback on your thought about maybe we can combine these to get the most bang for our buck during that time. That was the same line of thinking that I had, so we were having that discussion. So we probably, as time goes on, we'll probably, I'm hoping to really have that discussion. And so I understand that there was some pushback on that, so we want to really think about that and discuss that when the time comes.
Pushback from?
Some of the, or excuse me, airport board members. Because it's a possibility that if we're doing, the next two big things on there is the lighting and the, the lighting system and also the.
Runway rehab.
Thank you. The runway rehab. And so in talking with them, basically what we can do is, is that we can push to get all of that done sometime in twenty-twenty-five. When we get our federal aviation administration funding to us, we get a certain amount of that every year, an allotment every year. And so if we wanted to move forward to get that done, just economies of scale, to get the most done at one shot, and also take advantage of the ninety-five-five, then we might want to push forward to get that done next year. But in order to do that, we would probably need to float the amount for some of the projects of whatever our allotment would be for just basically one year, which we could certainly do between our cash reserves, and we could certainly do that. Just that we would, just whatever the amount is that we get on our monthly, or excuse me, our yearly allotments, we just plan on pay the general fund or wherever we take that to get that done. So between inflation, between the ninety-five, between getting a better price, because we have one big project all at one shot, there's a possibility that there could be some real cost savings. So we want to explore that and to look at that, so. I'm just not sure of what the, the impact that would make on the fixed-based operator and his things like that. And so we'd need to have more of a discussion and counsel would need to kind of listen to them a little bit, what they, what they, their, any thoughts or concerns that they had.
Gotcha.
So. Let's see here, finance, admin finance, nothing to report, human resources, nothing to report. Everybody got, everybody got shots for flu shots and not all employees, but the ones that wanted them or needed them. Flu shots and tetanus. Community Christmas meetings are ongoing. Spooktacular is scheduled for August, October thirty-first. And Carrie had several things that gave me writer's cramp this morning, so I'm going to, to just kind of turn it over to her to let her share some of that.
Some of these I've put in the economic development report, so you'll see in my general updates section rather than specific projects. A lot of what John was referencing, I've put in there for you. The main thing I think he wanted me to speak to was just the ongoing utility installation that's taking place throughout the community. I like to speak to that with you guys, you know, just periodically, so that you kind of know where we're at. It looks like chaos, for lack of a better term, in some areas of our community right now with improvements that are obviously beneficial to our community and they're great. But there's a lot going on. And so what I had reported this morning in the management meeting was the hit of a six-inch water main at Carnation and South Street yesterday in that general area. And it was about an hour before school dismissal time. And so what I was sharing this morning is though it looks like we just have, oh my goodness, happening in a moment, I was thrilled, because that, Ozark Fiber is the company that, that was part of their installation. And before the local supervisor had even made it on-site to where this water main hit had taken place, he had already called myself, Jason Jordan, and, and I think the police department actually, and had let us know that this had taken place and that this is happening. And he said to me, Carrie, school dismisses in an hour. I'm not sure what's going on here. And so I learned separately that there may have been some damage to our street, so we were going to have to close the street completely to deal with this water main break as well as the damage to the street. And I just can't speak highly enough about the fact that I got that call within ten minutes of it happening. He had in his mind, this could be an issue for school dismissal. And I was able to make a call immediately to the superintendent of schools and let him know, you may need to consider rerouting buses. We don't really know what's going to take place here. And so then superintendent of schools was on-site and we had all of the right people in place. The police department responded, they helped with traffic control, and they didn't end up having to actually reroute any traffic, but they knew ahead of time, so they could get a message out to their parents and that kind of thing. So I just want to say, though it looks like a lot happening in our community, and it is, they are improving daily on how they handle these situations, both the construction and the issues that arise. It's inevitable that there's going to be some things from time to time. And Miller Pipeline, DNE Plumbing that's handling the MoDOT job, Ozark Fiber, Excel, all of those companies are just doing a magnificent job now communicating with us from a staff level and addressing these things as they come. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we are seeing a lot of improvements there. I had shared some concerns in previous months, but they're doing a great job. And everything is moving along at the right pace that they had proposed to us, if not faster. So we're thrilled with that and I just wanted to provide that update and say how much I appreciate all of our different departments within the city, the school and the contractors for working together, because it's, that was all cleaned up and done by four o'clock, if I'm, if I'm understanding that correctly. And the street was temporarily patched. So that's pretty great for less than two hours to deal with a major water main break. So I think that's great communication between the entities, so just wanted to share that.
Is there any update from MoDOT? Have you talked to MoDOT about those?
We have had some conversations about that and I don't have any final. What she's referencing is there's been some questions about where some of these new sidewalk inlets and positionings are coming out closer to the state highway, how they're offset from some of our existing city sidewalks within our side streets that meet those state highways. And some of that stuff wasn't exactly depicted in our plans. We did a plan review here on the city side, but I wouldn't consider it a full review. And so we've, we've asked some questions about some of that and what planning is for that and what the purpose is for some of it. We're still waiting for response for that, so hoping to update you soon.
Thank you.
Anything else? With that, we're done here. I will make a motion that we move into closed session pursuant to RSMO six-ten dot O two-one for one, legal action, three, hiring, firing, disciplining, three, thirteen individual identified personnel records.
I'll make a second.
Thank you, Dawn.
Sorry, sir.
You're fine. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Chairman for Tennessee?
No.
Councilwoman Hofflinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Yes.
Councilman Blake?
Yes.
You are in closed session.
Thank you. You guys are welcome to stay, I don't know what you're going to stay for, but we'll.
We're going to stay here.
We're going to stay here?
Oh, really?